City of Milton, Common Council Meeting Tuesday, May 21st. We will call it to order at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda and Linda Clark has volunteered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome back Linda Clark. We're gonna go ahead and have Chief Pickering give us his report for public comments.
Oliver Smith, start the timing. Board has a copy of the report. You can take a look at it. Again, continues to be a kind of a busy time for us. City of Milton, forty-one calls during the month. This is April, even though we're, what, three weeks into May? Hundred ninety-eight so far for the year. Average response, five minutes and nine seconds. Nothing really out of the ordinary there. Prevention staffing, everything's doing pretty well. If you flip to page two, finances, they look really good on the report, although the board members have heard, May is a three payroll month as compared to a two, so we expect that to go red and we just have to work our way back out of that deficit over the course of the year. Significant events, that's really the thing that I'll spend a couple of minutes on. I swear, and Chief, I don't know about the law enforcement side of April went, but it was like every day was a full moon. And then May has not really gotten any better, by the way. You can kind of see the list there. I gave you some pictures of some of the events, just so you can kind of get a size and scope of the things that your crews are dealing with. Some crashes, obviously the Albion Incident, the crash over in Whitewater, which I think had just happened before last month, so that's nothing new. The one about the car versus power pole on Highway 59, we're gonna put a plaque on that pole and officially number it, pole number thirteen, because that's the same high line pole that was taken out by the tornado. So apparently that pole is possessed. The thing that made that so hard, in this picture, you can kind of see it. You see a white post coming down with the wires attached to it, coming down on the car. That was twenty-four thousand volts and they were live. So it took, and this is in no way a dig at the power companies, but it took an hour and seventeen minutes, literally, to get the power shut down. These are the high lines that served all of Evansville and all of Footville. So we literally, they tried very hard to help us so we could get to the victim, but in the end, they just had to shut the power down. There was no other way to do it, and they did. So the third picture is just for tongue-in-cheek. By the time they got it shut down, we were in the middle of a hailstorm. Can't go much better than that. On the backside, did have a fire in the town of Fulton. Insurance company, very complimentary, crews kept it to the area of origin. And a lot of the actual product, this was a cold storage facility for an HVAC company, a lot of the product actually all recoverable. So, you know, did exactly what they're supposed to do. And literally, before we were clear from the fire, two semis decided to go at each other out on the interstate. So it was an entertaining day. And then this bottom picture, for those of us who are car buffs, that is a nineteen sixty-four Chevelle. Father and son had worked on it to restore it. Son drove it to school on Monday and we came and helped him with his problem Monday afternoon. I loved the comment by Dad when he got there. He goes, hey, we restored it once, we'll restore it again. So, love the attitude. Like, that's kind of it, right? I mean, any questions anybody has? I know media's done a good job covering most of the things we've been involved in. There's just a lot of them.
Any questions?
I appreciate it.
Good luck tonight.
Yeah, good, yeah, thank you. Good luck tonight. Take care folks.
We, oh, shoot, he left. I should have had him stay. Teresa, maybe at the next board meeting, you can take with you the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation and the National Public Works Week proclamation. Does anybody, would you like me to read these? Or, I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody. We love and appreciate our public employees. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit to allow a detached private garage exceeding eight hundred square feet, the size of my apartment, at three hundred fifty East Madison Avenue.
Ryan Holbrook has requested a conditional use permit to build an eight hundred and thirty-two square foot detached garage on his property located at three fifty East Madison Avenue. City code requires owners, before building a detached private garage exceeding eight hundred square feet, obtain a conditional use permit. The plan meets all other requirements of the code. Planning Commission did recommend a favorable recommendation to approve this conditional use permit for Mr. Holbrook.
And we did have a public hearing at Plan Commission. I have not received any feedback from any neighbors, I don't think anybody has, so, okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move we approve the conditional use permit for the detached private garage exceeding eight hundred square feet at three hundred and fifty East Madison Avenue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the commercial facade grant request for one twenty dash one twenty-two Merchant Row.
Jake and Fred LLC has applied for the city's commercial facade grant to install two new windows, new trim, new railing, and painting. Total cost of the project is six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. The grant request is for three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, half of the expense. This facade does face first lane and the Community Development Authority voted to recommend that the city council award Jake and Fred LLC this commercial facade grant. The funding for this grant would be provided by Tax Incremental Financing District Number Seven.
There is, um... Is there a motion or any questions or comments?
I'd make a motion that we approve the commercial facade improvement grant request from Jake and Fred LLC for the property located at one twenty and one twenty-two Merchant Row in the amount of three thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh six in support of Clean Sweep.
This is a stated resolution in support of the Clean Sweep program. The Clean Sweep program is a program that the city participates annually in funding through Rock County. It provides a service to residents and businesses of the county. Last year, we did have a Clean Sweep on site. At some point in the future, we may have one again. This year, there's Clean Sweeps located in the Rock County Public Works Facility and City Blount, I believe. The resolution allows for support of grant applications by Rock County to offset some of the funding costs.
And are those dates still upcoming?
I would have to check. I know one is. The Rock County one may have already taken place.
Okay, I can't remember. Thanks. Is there a motion or questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash oh six.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action on modifying the commercial facade grant.
The Community Development Authority voted to modify the commercial facade grant to allow tenants to apply for funding, as well as owners of property, using different timelines, since they may have differing needs. Currently, the Commercial Facade Grant Guidelines state total grant funding for any single property may not exceed two grants within a four-year period. Modifications made allow for the owners to have two grants in any four-year period and the tenant to have two grants in any four-year period as well. Tenants would be required to provide a copy of their lease, indicating that they have at least three years remaining in their tenancy. And I've attached the guideline draft and application drafts with those modifications.
Discussion or questions or comments about this? I think the CDA had a pretty comprehensive discussion and thoughtful discussion about that. And I know Eric was there, Teresa was there, and Bill was there. Yeah.
Yeah, I was on the CDA at the time and, you know, the, we had several business owners that did come to that session and I think they made a very strong case that sometimes the tenant and the owner have very different needs, both of which help improve properties. Some of the examples given would be the tenant wanting a signed awning, for example, that, rather than have the tenant and the landlord competing for these dollars, this sort of provides for a couple of parallel streams.
So, I'm for the program as well. And I had one going into the weeds on this. One small detail would be nice to change. The requirement states that the tenant has to have three years remaining in their lease, which is fine, in my opinion, but to prove that, they give a copy of their lease. And I was wondering if we could also accept a letter from the landlord stating that, so that a tenant doesn't have to make public record the full lease agreement that they've signed, because there's sometimes a lot of meat to that, where maybe you negotiate for certain upgrades, they pay for certain things. There's just a lot of more private numbers that get shared if we give a lease and a letter from the landlord, still there, they're putting their name on the line and saying that it exists. If it could have achieved the same goal, I would like to see that be considered.
So do you want us to take that back to CDA then?
So there's a number of tenants that want to do it, so that's the only next step? We can't...
Could we approve it in its present form and then amend it at a future meeting after CDA?
Are there any legal ramifications to this change? Or suggestion of change? Or do you want to wait and give an opinion at a later date?
Well, so the question is, is the CDA recommendation binding on the council?
That's true. That was, that's one question, but that wasn't the one that I was thinking of. I know that it's not.
Okay, well, so assuming that, again, I haven't researched it, but assuming that's accurate, then it's a recommendation of the council and the council has the authority to establish whatever guidelines it feels is appropriate.
What about, is there any significance in having a letter versus like a notarized letter? I mean, how do we, I mean, how would we know that a tenant didn't forge a signature, I guess? I don't know. I'm just like thinking, you know, the most negative way I could think, I guess.
Well, no, I don't consider it negative. I think it's important.
I could see, I mean, if it's gonna be a letter from the, I could see it being notarized, as opposed to a lease that's got two sets of signatures on it. That's typically is a legal document, as opposed to just a letter on somebody's letterhead, which is not a legal document. I could see adding a notarization to it. I think that's a word.
Would you like, do you concur with Ken's legal opinion? No?
It's, well, that's within the discretion of the council. It's not required. But if you want to include as a requirement, you can. It's still a quote-unquote "legal representation," whether it's notarized or not. So the reason for the notarization, as you say, would be to verify that the person who says they signed it is the person who signed it. You can add that. I mean, you don't notarize a lease usually, unless you're gonna record it, so.
It's up to the council.
So the letter could have both signatures on it, tenant and landlord? Yeah, so you can, right, you can do that. You can notarize both of them, whatever, you know, whatever you feel.
And they could come into City Hall and do that, because we have notaries at City Hall too.
Just curious, but we are accepting leases that don't need to be notarized.
So could we have an option of two forms of verification? Is that what you're asking?
Either or?
I understand that's, all the person's stockman's recommendation is to have either a lease or a signed letter from the landlord. And so then the only question, if that's something that the council wishes to faithfully consider, is whether or not just the signature of the landlord is sufficient, whether you want to have both signatures on there, whether you want to have them notarized, so.
The application does require the applicant to sign. So if they were including a letter from their landlord.
So it's the, if I understand it correctly, it is the leasing that makes this application? And then you would submit with the application, a letter from the landlord?
That'd be correct.
Or the lease, if they don't mind sharing the lease. I know Charlotte wouldn't, you know, care. It's just an option for tenants that want to keep private.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not, like, making a comment on it either way. I'm just trying to help us, like, think through it.
Guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested amendment of the commercial facade grant with the addition of, providing as an option instead of a lease, a notarized letter from the landlord.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions, clarifications or comments?
Yeah, I have a clarification. So on that letter, are we looking for just the landlord's signature or the landlord and the tenant's signature?
In my motion, I was just looking for the landlord's signature.
Just the landlord, okay.
Yep, because I don't know if it's really necessary to have the tenants as well and...
Since it's on the application.
Right, since it's on the application and all that, and they're always turning it in.
Just wanted to clarify. And I'll abstain from this one.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty-four oh seven regarding the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
The CMAR is named a report required by the Department of Natural Resources for wastewater treatment facilities. It's a self-evaluation tool that promotes the owner's awareness and responsibility for wastewater collection and treatment needs, measures the performance of wastewater treatment work during a calendar year, and assesses its level of compliance with permanent requirements. The ranking is performed on a zero to four-point scale. The City of Milton's treatment facility scored three point nine five. That indicates that the wastewater utility, or the reason for the decrease below four this year was the same as last year because of the user charge system review having not occurred within the last zero to two years. We are in the voluntary range for improvements and have an A rating for our treatment facility. The treatment plant staff have consistently done an excellent job of maintaining an A rating for the city's treatment facilities. The recommended motion has no fiscal impact. So just looking for approval of Resolution twenty-four oh seven, force the middle to the Department of Natural Resources.
I have a question. So is there some sort of... I don't think we did anything wrong. Let me say that, first of all. Not having a wastewater utility rate within the last two years. But I'm just wondering, like, is everybody having a wastewater utility rate study every two years? Or is that, I mean, I'm just a little surprised that we got dinged for that, even though it's not a stupid thing.
Consistently in the ranking criteria, it's not new. It's existed in the CMAR for many years. I think that zero to two years is a recommendation from the DNR, hence the reason that we're in the voluntary range for improvements. I don't know what other communities are doing, how often they're doing them. There's different reasons for doing a utility rates study and different approaches as to when they should be accomplished and when they're needed, so.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering. Any other questions from anyone or comments?
Make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero seven.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman for design and construction engineering services for utility extensions on Chicago Street.
Baxter and Woodman has prepared a work order to perform design and construction engineering services for utilities on Chicago Street. This work order provides for design and engineering construction-related services for the water and sewer extensions on Chicago Street. The water extensions will eliminate a dead end, which is encouraged by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And the sewer extension will connect to a fifteen-inch unused main that was installed in two thousand eight in anticipation of this extension. The sewer line will be able to serve approximately two hundred acres south of State Highway fifty-nine. It gives us access to that two hundred acres. It does not actually provide service for that two hundred acres. Fees for the service are based on the engineer's standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed, plus reimbursements for out-of-pocket expense. Their not-to-exceed fee is twenty thousand eight hundred for the design phase and twenty thousand eight hundred for construction observation phase, for a total of forty one thousand six hundred. The water department will pay for its portion of the expense, either through savings or by special assessment. And the wastewater expense will be done through special assessment as well. City administration recommends approving this work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for the Chicago Street utility extensions. I will also comment that we've got two very strong potential developments that we've been working on currently that will require this extension to receive sanitary sewer service for their buildings.
And do those, the recum, the recuments are special assessments not built into a development agreement?
One is built into a development agreement and one is not. And that's just partial. We would be special assessing that whole two hundred acre area that would be utilizing this sewer line at some point. And that would, the assessment would occur when they hook up to that sewer line.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I would recommend approving the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for the Chicago Street utility extension.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding sidewalk grinding.
Excuse me. The city performs various types of sidewalk maintenance. The one effort that's taken every year is, or almost every year, sidewalk grinding. We also do replacements or raising sidewalks as well. Safe Step LLC provided a proposal of thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents to grind one hundred and forty-two locations throughout the city. The general fund budget includes funding for street maintenance and construction that will be used if approved. Additional grinding, if required, would be approximately twenty-five dollars per linear foot. As required by city purchasing policy, projects receiving only one quote require a three-fourth vote of the common council. City administration recommends approving the contract with Safe Step LLC for sidewalk grinding, subject to publication of a Class One notice.
Is this in addition to the work that they did last summer? Or was that work not completed?
No, that was completed last year. This would be this year's project.
I'm assuming we're happy with their work.
They have been working in the city, I think going back to two thousand fifteen. And, yeah, they've done a good job. They're efficient and clean up and we've been happy with them. And there's not a lot of other vendors that we're aware of that perform this specific type of work.
Any other questions or comments?
Are there other locations for next year than two, or is this getting close to the end of the list?
We, we walk staff, public work staff walks the city, or, you know, a large portion of the city. And the spring determines the list. We provide it to Safe Step. They're viewed, take their measurements. And then, you know, if the work's approved, they do the grinding work. We do not have a list of grinding for next year and we won't until after this project is completed sometime. You know, we could start a list, of course, if something comes up, we would, we start keeping track of it. But we have them come to town once a year, so.
Is there other sidewalk maintenance, mudjacking or anything like that that happens? I was surprised at the relatively low cost of the grinding. I assume other solutions are more expensive.
Yeah, in the Safe Step proposal, they do provide some comparison. It's not, it's not, I guess, entirely apples to apples for every situation, because the different types of repair needed wouldn't warrant, you know, grinding or wouldn't warrant a mudjacking. But we do have and have performed some mudjacking and we do also do just removal and replacements as well.
I'll recommend the approval of the contract with Safe Step for sidewalk grinding, subject to the publication of a Class One notice.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action declaring public works and utility items as surplus.
The Public Works Department is requesting authorization to declare the two thousand nine Chevy W forty-five hundred water van as surplus. Council Policy Number Five requires any item with an estimated value of over two thousand dollars to obtain common council approval to be declared surplus. Recently, a water, a water van was purchased to replace this vehicle. At the time, we asked the dealer what the estimated value of our current vehicle was and that is included to be in the range of fourteen thousand to, you know, just under twenty thousand. So we took the average and are proposing a transfer of sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars from the capital fund to the water utility to make the vehicle, to transfer the vehicle from a water utility vehicle to a streets department vehicle. And then we would request the ability to sell the water van toolbox, because that would no longer be needed as well.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the transfer of sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars in capital funds to the water utility for the existing water van and to sell the toolbox with proceeds deposited to the capital fund.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
So we, Attorney Schrader clarified, we need to also declare the water van toolbox as surplus, so we can sell that.
I'll make a motion to declare the water van toolbox the surplus.
Okay, so do you want to just amend your first motion, just like, and? Because we have a motion and a second that we haven't voted on yet. Do we, okay. Alright, go ahead. Must say it out of body experience.
I'll make the motion to make the water van toolbox surplus.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Oh my gosh, there must be a tornado on its way. All right, here we go. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five committee commission and board appointments.
Sorry, Chernberger has submitted questionnaires to be included on committees and commissions, and after review, Mayor Welch has recommended that sorry be appointed to the Ethics Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. These are actually both alternates in the, those boards and commissions, um, and now it just needs council confirmation.
I'll recommend the city appointments to the Ethics Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries general, Linda Clark's general items. Committee reports or general items, go ahead.
Well, I'll start with historic preservation. We met last week and we are looking at possibly trying to work on projects maybe with Public Works to, uh, do some work in the cemetery and on that same green, we're also, there's this Saturday from one to three is a tombstone cleaning, uh, event at the cemetery as well. And then outside that, for the Civil Living History Days, we had thousand cat kids here on Friday. And then we had several hundred people on Saturday and several hundred people more on Sunday. Uh, people from as far away as Florida, South Carolina, Virginia, New York, of the states that we know of outside of Wisconsin and Illinois. And then people who we know for sure came specifically for the event on the weekend. We had, um, a Boy Scout troop from Fond du Lac all the way down here for the event, so want to share that.
Great turnout, great weather.
Despite all the other activities that are going on la- this last weekend, we actually had a fantastic turnout.
Congratulations. I know how much work you guys put into that. A lot of work. Anything else on any committee reports?
Um, I can just give a brief update from parks. Um, there was a discussion regarding, uh, Dog Park Cleanup Day that was set for October twelfth. We're going to relocate a scoreboard at South Goodrich Park from the kickball field to the softball field. There was also discussion regarding the Parks and Recreation Commission membership that will, um, at some point likely have an ordinance before council for review. And there was some other discussion regarding, um, this golf course and, um, other improvements at L M R Park. So, yeah, we had a pretty active meeting for parks.
Thanks. Any other committee reports? Eric, did you attend a library committee meeting?
Not since last council meeting, unfortunately. I would have went if there was one, absolutely.
Anything else for anyone? Okay. Um, we'll have Jenny go first as staff reports for her special day.
I do not have any items this evening.
And then we will have Paul go for his special day.
Uh, staff continues to work on, uh, development in the city. Um, we've got a couple of big ones coming down in the pipeline in the next couple of meetings. Um, so that's really exciting. Um, obviously, I want to thank, uh, staff and council here tonight on, uh, the hard work we've done over the last couple of days with the strategic plan. Um, thank you for taking the time to be involved. I think this is a really important moment in the city and uh, it's great to hear all the good communication going on between staff and amongst the council and uh, it's really, really good to see, uh, us working really well together, so.
And, and it was posted, that communication was all posted. And, you know, being transparent, I just want to make sure that everybody knows those meetings are posted. And recorded.
It should also be noted that, uh, Paul is about to become a City of Milton taxpayer.
Yeah, and we will be reassessing his house accordingly that he's buying.
We would like to hold off that announcement until after closing.
There are no secrets because we are fully transparent. Some people have birthdays today. Some people do. I don't know who they are. I mean, I might know who they are, but. Chief?
Uh, nothing hard and fast, uh, but we are working on, um, some more community involvement projects for the department. Um, we're working on a fraud presentation, um, coming up in June, uh, date. Make it set. I'm just not a hundred percent sure what the date was. There's nothing in public, um, made public for that yet. And then I'm also working, um, with the Gathering Place. They requested to host another event, um, looking to do something with security around the prop- personal properties, business properties. Um, so that'd be another opportunity for, um, some members of our department to go and get on the public and, um, preliminary talks with Charlotte also to do something at her venue as well for a sit-down, an open venue for discussions with members of our department. Um, other than that, nothing else, um, news worthy from our side.
There will be tomorrow now that you've said that, but. Ashley, I know the library is incredibly boring, but can you try to just make something up to excite us?
I surely can. Um, I'm not sure if I mentioned this last time, but the library did receive a grant from the Melton Fund um, with the help of Sarah Stuckey, um, that allows to purchase outdoor movie equipment for our gazebo and story gardens. So we have a pull-down screen, a huge inflatable movie screen, a sound system and a projector. So this will allow us to do some fun programming outdoors and then enhance some of our other programming. I really want to try to get a movie night scheduled sometime in the next month, so cross my fingers on that. Um, today, Marika and I visited Northside. Harmony students visited the library. I'll be at middle school tomorrow all day. Marika will be at Northside on Thursday, and Jamie has already visited the other elementary schools, so we can talk about our summer programming. So the last two weeks of May are always pretty fast and furious for us as we talk about all the stuff happening at the sun, uh, for the summer. And then I wanted to share that the Melton Youth Coalition's, um, youth group, the Substance Prevention Society, also known as S P S, is hosting a mental health event tomorrow at Schober Park. It's a free, stress-free event for middle school and high school students, and it's, um, led by the youth group.
Very cool. Okay, Mark, anything? I heard there was a little messy situation with some stuff being dumped. But we cleaned that up, right?
The yard waste bins or?
Yes, yes.
So we do have yard waste bins. We did have some, um, we've, we've done some outreach regarding those and the use of those to try to, uh, educate the public on the appropriate use of those yard waste bins. Get the yard waste that's acceptable into the yard waste bins. Trees, branches are not acceptable. If the bins are full, there's an overflow spot to the side that can be used, but not directly in front of the bins or the recycler cannot come haul it away. And we also have a dumpster on site for garbage related to the yard waste, so if you're bringing in bags or other things that are not compostable, that can go in the dumpster.
So maybe the library could do a Tic Tac video while Tic Tac's still legal. Kelsey? Oh, okay, so. Anything else? Am I missing anything on the agenda? Cause my.
I just, if I can just remind everyone, we're having a Memorial Day program ceremony on Monday, um, the twenty-seventh, nine AM in Veterans Park to honor our fallen heroes, so please come if you're able.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, so. In my not so wonderful handwriting, but I was trying to make it readable for folks like me that are over the age of fifty. But the font did decrease as I went on, went along, so there's, um, behind Kelsey and Mark and Mark, number one is washer dryer, number two stove refrigerator, number three is internet TV phone. It is the months of December, January and February. Pick number one, two or three. What will you give up for those three months? In Wisconsin, in the state of Wisconsin, are you gonna, would you be willing to give up your washer and dryer for those three months? Your stove and refrigerator? Or all of your internet TV phone access?
Yeah, washer and dryer. I can't work without three, so.
You can wash your clothes in the sink and hang them.
Yeah. You can always hang them up outside, let them freeze, and then when you bring them in, they'll dry.
I'm doing number two.
I'm with you.
I'm, I'm glad you're at the other end of the.
And dryer, they used to do it on rocks in a river, and it worked just fine.
It's cold outside. I put my groceries outside and I have an insipid, so.
I need Jenny to go.
We used to hang dry in the win- in the so- in the winter and it worked just fine.
I live without a washer dryer a few times.
Okay, we'll look at, we're gonna let Jenny talk now.
I'm making clarification of going without one of those that is just in your own personal home?
Yes, yes, just your own personal.
So I would go without the internet TV and phone because there's many areas that have public access, such as the library for internet. Uh, which then washer and dryer, I, no, I don't want to live without, and stove and refrigerator, I didn't, yeah. So I would say I would go without number three.
There's also places you can go to u- use washer and dryer as well. Like the mil- the lunch mat down.
I think the library should provide the washer and dryer service too. That would be great.
I would go with.
I'm doing two as well.
Gee, I'm one.
I'd, I'd mix and match. I'd give up TV and I'd give up the, I, I'd give up the stove. See, I got, pick one of each.
That's really, okay, well, I wasn't clear on that, but okay.
Well, if we're doing that, I'll give up the TV and the dryer.
I'll, I'll go with one.
Well, since I'm living without a washer and dryer now, I'll just keep that plan going. Living without internet too.
I'll just give up, I'll just give up one different one each day of the week.
Okay, fantastic. Just need to know who is not, trying to be a Ashley and Chief and Mark.
I don't have a washer dryer, so that'd be easy enough to give up.
See, some of us are roughing it.
I'll follow Jenny's suit. I'll give up number three.
Good job. Now, this is your ha- your whole family has to give it up, so that's okay.
If I'm not in the house at the same time, yes. So you're sleeping at the P D for how long?
That's why we have a cot in his office, no.
It's certainly going to be the budget request items for twenty-five.
Kelsey, did you go?
I just went the last two weeks without a washer and dryer and I won't ever do it again, so I'm gonna go with number three cause if it's just personal, there's other places we can use those things, so.
Challenge is on. My last three months as mayor, no. I'm just. I, I, I'm, okay, every, no, no, our legal opinion has not come from Mark. Well, I thought that Linda, Eric was gonna let Linda do the memorial announcement, but he didn't. Linda's going after Mark.
All right, so now we got more specificity on the rules. It's just not what you are willing to give up. It's what your ho- household is willing to give up or will, what you're willing to impose on your household to give up, right?
It's an authoritarian, yeah.
Yeah, and that works in my household, yeah. Well, obviously, assuming that I want to preserve my health and well-being, then I'll need to go with number two because to have a teenage daughter in the house with no washer and dryer or internet TV or phone, that's, that's not gonna happen. But, you know, to not be able to cook or whatever for three months, I guess they can probably suffer on that.
That's right. Okay, we got everybody here. Then it's Linda.
She's going after the marks. I want to point that out.
And she's been really quiet all night, so let's give her five minutes. Go ahead and let it know. I think you guys are all gonna survive if we have any natural disaster. I'm so proud of you. Good job. All right, when's our next meeting? June? June fourth. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Nice to see you, Linda. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe tonight. And stay safe, our first responders.